Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of March 5th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Four selectmen present this evening as well as the town administrator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary?
I have none.
Someone else to bartend it?
Yeah.
Okay. On March 15th, I will be bartending for, at the Stonebridge Marina, 7 to 10, I believe. It's going to benefit the onset Bay Association, and I will be joined by Jesse Pitts, who is from, what's the name of it?
Tradewinds.
Tradewinds.
I thought you were saying people did a lot of Rochester.
Rochester, no. So, March 15th. Hope to see you there.
You can't help yourself, can you? Peter, 15th, before you know it.
Well, we're actually, within four weeks from today, will be the town election. Couple of selectmen's offices up, school committee, assessors, moderator. So, mark that day on your calendar and make sure you exercise your right to vote. And on April 22nd, we'll begin and hopefully end the same night, town meeting.
Patrick. I have nothing this evening. We're gonna talk citizens' comments, unless you have something.
No, pass right now. Any citizens' comments? Wow.
Wow. All right then, board comments.
Mary?
Uh, no.
Peter.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't know if this is actually, a lot of people know it, but I don't think it's ever been, come out officially, but our Commissioner of Buildings, David Requena, will be leaving us soon. He's accepted a job in Dartmouth substantially for family reasons, which those of us who know what he's dealing with certainly understand and can appreciate. I just wanted to say that for the couple of years that he's been here, I think he's done an outstanding job. He's brought the enforcement mechanisms that have been in place to a new level. He's actually using them to take people to court who don't comply with code requirements, have excessively messy properties, and so on and so forth. So, I spoke with him actually earlier today and thanked him for everything he did. He's still gonna be around helping out with some things during a transition period for a couple of months, so if you run into him, that's why he's in there. But I just wanted to say that he did a heck of a job. He's gonna be missed, and if you appreciate his work the way I think those of us up here do, please support Section 530 at town meeting.
Thank you. Just to log on to that, David has worked really hard in what I consider a short period of time to take the Inspection Service Department and bring it up to the level that it need to get to in order to enforce properly, et cetera. And he's worked with all the different boards and committees, which is something that was always lacking because it was like separate areas, we really didn't discuss things with each other, and he's made that particular loop work now. And we're also, most people don't realize, but we're now being able to take permits and different applications online electronically, and it speeds up the process. I think it was last week, I think it was on a Wednesday, we took 21 permits electronically in the process, which usually would take us two months. So, again, I can't say enough, appreciate how much he's done, and for me personally, I think it's a big loss. And that's all for today.
Yeah, I got, I'm gonna say something here. Okay, so if you remember, not too long ago, we had an article that came in front of us for money for a church. We did some stained glass windows in another church and so on. And then when the last article came up, we kinda put it on hold because there was a thing going through the state court and all that. And of course, eventually, it got ruled sort of in a negative way. Well, just so everybody knows, I thought everybody should know this, and I kinda feel bad about this because I think there should be some differentiation between what's historical in preservation and what's, you know, what is, you know, what is, why can't some money go for preservation of history regardless of whether it's public money or not? But in keeping with that, in New Jersey, they had a case where they were using public preservation funds on a church, and it got challenged in court, went to court, and the SJC down there ruled against it, saying you can't use public money in churches. Well, lo and behold, the Supreme Court yesterday says they're not even gonna hear the case, which means they're letting the ruling stand. Justice Kavanaugh was pretty upset. He apparently wrote a little thing because he thought there should be more to it, too, as well. But apparently, it didn't get his way, and they're not gonna hear it, at least now. That doesn't mean later on, they wouldn't take it up. But typically, if they, if the SJC does that, then they're pretty sure that that's the way they, it's okay with them, in other words. And I, you know, I think it's not a good thing that it's totally black and white, but it is what it is, and I just want everybody to know, and some of the folks that, you know, are trying to, trying to get these funds for their churches, that really, their hands are tied, and it really, it has nothing to do with anybody other than the courts themselves. So, I just thought everybody should know that, anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, appointments, reappointments, interviews, anything?
No, we have nothing. We have nothing and no licenses. The next thing will be the dog hearing, but we'll have to skip by that.
Okay, let's move on to discussion of votes to recommend warrant articles.
All right, now, I don't know, hold on a minute.
Do we have anything to do?
I got it here. Well, I'll tell you what we have left, okay? We have capital plan, which I don't think we have yet, right? We have the budget. Is the budget ready?
Oh, we, that hasn't been finalized.
Okay.
The capital plan won't be till...
So, if the budget's not, then EMS's budget isn't.
EMS's is, if I can give you the finalized number for next week.
Okay, so we'll get that next week. Upper Cape?
They've, they have not presented the budget.
Okay.
We have a, we have an idea, but I don't think they've officially voted. They're gonna do that on the 14th, I believe.
So, I'm assuming water pollution control, same thing?
I don't thi, I haven't received a letter from them that they finalized the budget. I've worked with the, with their, with Mr. Bailey over there on it, but...
Union contracts?
No.
Nope. All right, so the only, grant easement, petition for the grant easement, and the, we haven't made a decision on that. We do have the gentleman here in the hall today evening from GAF.
The grant easement, is that the one for the...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
...throwing a foot for water, for maybe a little water or something?
No, no, the grant easement is for, it's a petition article for the, for the thing for the Mill Pond Diner.
Right.
And he's here. We can bring him up if you wanna do that now?
Yeah.
All right, come on down.
I'm sure he'd have you.
Come on down.
Rather than the later.
You're next.
Appreciate that, thank you. Unless you're coming by the hour, I always push you. I'll take as long as you need me, that's it. Thank you, Brian Grady, GAF Engineering. I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but what the request is for is the Mill Pond Diner was connected to municipal sewer for a number of years, and through no action of Mr. Zidi, that connection was severed. So, he's been operating with his grease trap and septic tank as a tight tank for a number of years, pumping. So, he's looking to reconnect to the municipal sewer system, which requires an easement. We have to construct a new force main under the street and over onto the Tremont Nail property to connect to the force main that exists there. So, it's just over 1,000 square feet of the easement that we need on the Tremont Nail Company to make that connection. A number of years ago, we did a septic repair plan for the Mill Pond Diner back in 16, I believe. He had an estimate for construction to do an onsite system at that time of $120,000. So, I imagine in today's dollars, obviously, it's approaching 150, and connection to the municipal sewer, we believe is gonna be in the neighborhood of about half of that. So, he's just looking to reconnect that service that he had enjoyed for a period of years.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Um, no.
No, I think, not administrative, yes.
Well, okay, so, so the one thing that has to be made clear as well is that he's servicing on a tight tank at this point. Tight tanks are really not allowed. They're only allowed in the case of residential use, and that's only if it's a seasonal use. So, something has to happen for this place. We have to either connect it to the sewer system or something. So, we really need to do something, one way or the other. It's gotta get done, whether we do it or whatever. So, I know that there'll be some work on this at some point. Derek's been having some conversations and so on, and we'll have to see where it goes from there.
Just for background information, Mill Pond Diner, way back when the previous owner, I think the Kenyans had the, basically the Tremont Nail Facility, the old company store way back, beginning, there is a, I believe, a pump down on the ground underneath on their property.
The pumping station, yes.
What's happened is there was an agreement, which I think was more verbal than anything else, to allow the Mill Pond to pump through there, back into the town system. Actually, that particular pump was actually wired into the White Building across the street, and for I don't know how many years, the town was paying electricity for that as well. So, it was a pretty big mess. I think, I could be wrong, but I think we still have an outstanding deal that's never been paid. Mr. Sullivan can say yes and no if I'm right or wrong on that.
Yeah, and that's what held up from converting to apartments, because you can't get a permit if you owe the town money.
So, this has been a really convoluted thing, and then, of course, the, I'll probably get in trouble, but the owner, at that time, of the company store, et cetera, unilaterally cut off the system to Mill Pond Diner, which caused the Mill Pond Diner to have severe loss of food, et cetera, everything backed up into the system. So, obviously, it's been a problem. The issue really is, how do we actually go ahead and do this, and the town comes up with a system that works for the town as well for liability, et cetera? And I'm going to stop there and let Mr. Sullivan continue from that point.
He actually filled the pipe with concrete.
Oh, yeah, and he put a sheet over it.
And then put a car over it, and she pulled it, so he couldn't get at it.
And there was a lawsuit back and forth.
Yeah, it's a citizens' petition, has to go on the warrant, and we'll see what the town has to say about it.
Well, my only question to you is, we have to, you know, basically make a recommendation or not a recommendation.
You don't have to do it tonight.
You don't have to do it tonight, but we need some information about handling this.
Yeah, I think there's, there's really not much information right now. It's, again, it's a citizens' petition article. If it goes forward, then we enter into negotiations as to whether it'll happen or not. That's however those negotiations go.
So, basically, at this point, we probably have a, no recommendation at all?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, Mr. Tropiano's hitting the nail on the head. It's, obviously, something needs to be done, but...
Is it?
Yeah, so...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, I think we should wait for a little bit of time. I think it was a little more longer until we get closer.
You should probably ask, you should probably wait till council's back here, or anyone gets to have any questions.
Yeah.
Are there anything you wanna see? I don't wanna have them continuously come back.
Well, I don't think he has to come back. We get it.
Oh, we have the information.
And he has, he has copies of the plan. I think we have one in our office, too, right?
Yeah, you should've received the easement plan and the petition, correct?
Yeah.
So, we'll play, play with that and see where it goes from there, Brian.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think everybody, anyway, has the best intentions to get him what they need in order to function properly. So, I think you can, you can have that at heart. I think, I think we'll get there somehow.
It's just a question of what it is.
Exactly. It's how we're gonna get you there, that's all.
Right, I mean, he can take care of it on his side by himself, but that's quite costly. He's just looking to get a service restored that he enjoyed for a number of years.
Yeah, if he put a septic in, it wouldn't make sense to me, it's, and I'm gonna just say this, it doesn't logically make sense to spend any money at all to put one in because the property is more valuable, no matter whether Mill Pond is there forever or whenever, because, you know, Zidi's is getting up there in age. He might wanna sell it. Who knows what somebody's gonna buy it or whatever? That's a nice piece of commercial property there, and it's definitely more, more usable, even better for the town with a sewer line there than it is with a septic. So, you don't wanna have a septic system in there.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
What's good for the town is really the important thing in the end.
You have the other citizens' petition articles?
The other one is the agricultural regulation. And yes, I have it. It's in your package, it should be in your, your thing on your computer.
There was something sent out. The petitioner is in Florida, isn't anticipated back for the end of March, and the petitioner went so far as to say the article spoke for itself, and I think that's a direct quote.
Yes.
Okay, well...
So, I'll let the record reflect that.
Mr. Scaziotti.
Mr. Scaziotti is here at 7:20. So, I don't know, I mean, we already have something before the state from the Harbor Master anyway, so I don't know, what do we wanna do with this? We wanna wait until town meeting to...
Yeah, I think we gotta let that state, see what comes back from the state first. Well, if it doesn't come back in time, I mean...
Just do it next year.
If it comes to come back in time, that doesn't mean this is gonna work either.
Right.
This could get rejected outright flat if the state doesn't approve ours.
My question is, again, technically, we're supposed to recommend or not recommend, or have no...
I would vote not to recommend at this point with the superfluous, given that the Harbor Master's already filed his own version with the state that he devised in consultation with the state. So, I, I find it highly unlikely that his is gonna come, come back rejected.
That's your motion?
Yep.
Second.
Second by, Mary?
I can hear you.
Sorry, any questions?
No.
Do not recommend.
Do not recommend.
Do not recommend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No? Abstain?
No, no, I said, I said yes.
I did say yes.
Oh, sorry.
Go for guilty.
Vote is 5-0-0.
Thank you. So, that takes care, until we get back to the others.
All right, so, that's it. That's all we've got, and the only ones now are, what do you call it? Now, this, this, we gotta kinda get these done relatively quickly, because that book, I mean, they're gonna want this stuff in the book, right?
Yeah, next week.
At some point? Can you have it ready for next week, Derek?
What's that, the...
These, the budgets and all that?
No, that's not a, I mean...
We're gonna have to have a, no decision on the others.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, it's...
14th is the day.
Well, the other piece to all this, too, is we've got the special, and how much of that is gonna make it in?
They have a later date for that.
Well, a date for the special.
But it's all supposed to go in the FinCom handout, regardless of whether it's, or they're gonna do two separate books?
I know, this is, that's, that is problematic, you know?
Well, it will be two separate warrants, but are they gonna have two separate products for town meeting to go through?
Find out tomorrow, the meeting.
Yeah, historically, we've done two separate finance committee handouts, two separate colors and things like that.
We do have, we don't know how to go to the special.
Yes, I got it.
Petitioners here.
The petitioner is here?
Which petitioner?
Actually, it's not a petitioner.
Well, actually, it's CPC, I think.
This is CPC, yeah.
CPC.
This is for the new housing units at Agawam Village. This is for the special.
We wanna take up the special stuff? Will we have more of them?
Well, we only have one right now, so do you wanna put it on or don't you? I mean, let's, we could put it on.
I'd rather wait.
Okay, we can wait. If somebody wants to wait, we can wait. It's no big deal.
I'll buy next week.
We'll do it next week, then.
Next week's our last week to go get through for the special?
Yes.
Next week is the one to get through for the regular...
One's our deadline for the special. I thought that was...
I don't have the sheet with me, so I don't know.
I thought it was next week.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
That's when the out is going into the...
Right.
It doesn't snow.
That's not for our recommendations.
What did you say, Sandy?
I just said, I hope it doesn't snow.
Yeah, no kidding. Well, we'll have to come no matter what, because we have to close it and do whatever else.
The national guidebook, it's not a problem.
All right.
You'll have to...
Yes.
You'll have to get here by carriage.
Okay.
Sled.
Tony will come, come down by APC.
Well...
All right, so...
Next item would be any other business not required? Tony?
I'll send it.
Mary? Peter?
Nope.
Patrick?
No.
I have one thing, I'm not gonna ask for a vote or anything. There is a bunch of different bills, and I'll explain it a little bit later, coming down from, at the state level for different items, and I'll go through them all. What I'd like to do is put out the next week's warrant for asking for permission where I can write letters in support. We'll explain it at that time, and we'll vote to, let me go ahead and write letters and also participate in hearings at the state house, you know, representing the board.
What are they? You're gonna, you're gonna send it to us?
I'll do it, no, I'm gonna do it during the initiative reports.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Just wanna give you a heads up.
All right, town administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, I was going over, actually, the articles for the spring special town meeting, so if you don't mind if I just run through a couple of them.
Oh, yeah, that's great, because we only have one.
All right, well, we've got the, Article 1 is traditionally the annual budget transfers. We anticipate that there will be. We've had several large retirements this year, and we know that the sick leave line was, was hit hard, so there's probably a bunch of different departments that are gonna need transfers, so I'd anticipate up to about 10 of them altogether, so...
Okay.
The item after that is to, and I'm basically going down the same line as the, the previous one, is to fund the parking program. We've also met with, there might be an additional request as part of that, well, there's two. Changing the kiosks from pay and display to pay by space, which people can then do on their cell phones, which should make it easier for a lot of folks as well. You can actually plug in your, your own, your own, what do you call it, license plate number and things like that, and it'll, it'll speak electronically to our ticketing units and such, so we're trying to make it a little bit more user-friendly and see what we can do. Also, we're looking, probably, there's probably a little soon, but if it gets in there, it'll be fantastic, is funding a GATRA shuttle this, this summer to run through onset through some of the parking areas, such as Heinz Field, and potentially going all the way over to Bay Point and making it all part of the village, especially with a couple of things that have been open for a while, but also just reopened.
Oh, that's good.
Article 3 is the spring special town meeting, capital, capital items and capital planning is meeting this Thursday. We have the annual transfer of free cash for the spring. The, right now, we plan on, there's about $1.2 million left over in, well, it's actually, it's, it's more than that, but...
Bad way to put it.
It's, yeah, left over.
Left over, but we have free cash that we've not expended.
$700,000 of that we roll over annually as part of our fiscal policy. $172,000 will be going to the snow and ice budget, although it's been a mild year with our, with the salt shed. We put a lot of salt in that, and there's been a lot of material used. So, we also plan on, for the, there's a couple of other items. We have a bunch of grants that we've received that need a matching portion, and as everybody knows, we don't budget any extra annually. We spend to the, to the penny to try and keep the services, so we need to use free cash to do our 25% matching of them. So, we'll have a couple of those free cash. We're also going to have rescinding of previous borrowing articles, which is a couple outstanding ones that we wanna get off the books as we start going out. When we go out for the bonding for the school project, we wanna make sure that we have everything in line, that our books are looking the best possible for our bond rating. There's, there's also, we're gonna rescind the portable unit one, the one that was just passed, because that's an $800,000 liability. Again, we did not borrow those funds, those, that was just if you, that was an authorization to do so. We, there's a parcel of land on Charlotte Furnace Road. It's an old Campanelli piece of property that, it's a, it's a thin triangle consisting of .56 acres. It's in the R60, so obviously not buildable. One of the abuders has expressed interest in it. I'd say, let's bring it to town meeting to authorize disposition, and then we dispose of it through the procurement process. The next item is, this is gonna be an interesting one. There's one thing that you can set cannabis revenue aside for, and that's a stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund. My recommendation is to, and you can do, this is the maximum, 25% of all cannabis revenue to the stabilization fund, and I think we should set that purpose aside as well for the police to rebuild the police station or what we need to do.
That's a good idea. Because, you know, let's face it, the police should have, they have to take some of that money. They just do, yeah.
Well, I thought as the taxpayers just generously increased for a 20-year period to build a new school, if there's some way we can do something that's greatly needed without impacting their taxes, I think this is the best way possible.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's a good idea.
All right, it's a new revenue before you start expending it, put it into this, so you're not hooked on it, if you will.
I think it's a great idea.
So, you don't know if you'll get it forever, so let's put that aside and see what we can do.
Yeah, great idea.
So, those are, those are some of the highlights.
You can smile a lot.
I always smile.
Thank you. Okay, it's 7:30, hearing time.
All right.
We're gonna let the official lawyer take over for the day.
Okay. Can we have, motions for the hearing, please?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Selectman Tropiano, second by Selectman Scaziotti. Roll call vote, Selectman Scaziotti?
Yes.
Selectman Bruce?
Yes.
Selectman Tropiano.
Yes.
Chairman Slavin, title bomb, yes. Okay, the hearing is now open. I'd like to ask anybody who intends to testify in this matter to stand up and raise their right hand. And, all money? Aye, state your name.
Cheryl Gavito.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. Well, you're here to testify, so tell us what happened in relation to this latest incident involving these dogs.
So, as you're familiar with the Geagle dogs, we already had a hearing on them back in June, June 19, 2018. They were deemed dangerous, and there were certain restrictions that were placed on the dog. Unfortunately, and with a heavy heart, I'm here to report that on February 15th, the order was violated. The dogs left the owner's property off-leash, unmuzzled, and they attacked the neighbor's dog. The neighbor's dog was injured, but not seriously, and the owners of that dog have waived coming here tonight to the hearing because they live next door to the person, and it's just as an uncomfortable situation. I do have a written statement from the dog owner, Geagle, Paul Geagle, I believe you folks have received that. He does not deny that the dogs got off his property off-leash. He states it was only for 60 seconds. When the neighbors called me, I could hear their dog crying in the background, and they informed me what happened, and one of the things that they had told me is, Paul Geagle didn't even come over to see if the dog was okay, he just grabbed his dogs and left. So unfortunately, with a heavy heart, I just feel that I don't have faith in this dog owner to be responsible and to prevent any more incidences, so I'm here to request humane euthanasia of both dogs.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else to testify in this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna go through the documents that we have in the file, and then when I'm done, I'm gonna ask for a vote of the board to take administrative notice of the file itself. The first document, and I'll read this, I'll actually read Mr. Geagle's letter that he submitted in lieu of an appearance to us, because I think it's important to get the whole thing into the record. This was received by the Board of Selectmen on the 27th last month. From Eight Windy Hill Drive, West Wareham, Mass., from Paul Geagle, to Animal Control Officer Gorbiat Dill and Board of Selectmen Chairman Alan Slavin, and it reads as follows: "On the morning of February 15, 2019, I was on my way to the pet supply store with my two dogs. While putting them in the back of my SUV, they scrambled out before I could close the lift gate. The dogs ran out towards the property next door and tree line, which is about 120 feet from the driveway. They came immediately back and jumped into the vehicle, which was still running. Only 60 seconds or so had elapsed. I heard only my dogs barking briefly. I did not hear or see anything through the trees of the property line. I assumed the dogs were chasing a squirrel that frequents my bird feeder. Hours later, I received the complaint report, violation and order of quarantine in person. A card and note of apology was sent to the Raffertys." These are the people whose, whose dog was attacked. "I take full responsibility for what has happened and apologize to all concerned for my lapse in judgment in this matter. Please accept this statement in lieu of a requested appearance on March 5, 2019." Again, we received this letter on the 27th. "After speaking with, going over this with town council, who's on vacation, but correspond by email, and also speaking with Chairman Slavin, I felt that it was incumbent upon the board to warn Mr. Geagle of various rights that he would be giving up if he simply submitted written testimony rather than coming in here in person." So I'll read the contents of the letter that Chairman Slavin authorized me to send to, to the Geigles. Paula Laura Geagle, Eight Windy Hill Drive, West Wareham, Mass., regarding dangerous dog hearing, second alleged offense, March 5, 2019. Dear Mr. and Mrs. Geagle, I have been authorized by Wareham Board of Selectmen Chairman Alan H. Slavin to respond to Mr. Geagle's correspondence submitted to our office today, which you have offered in lieu of appearing at the above- referenced hearing. During the hearing, your letter will be read into evidence as your defense to the complaint that has been made against your dogs, and will be accorded the appropriate evidentiary weight, which is typically less than the weight accorded to direct testimony, as we cannot ask questions of a written document. Furthermore, although I am not your attorney, in good conscience, I must caution you that offering a letter in lieu of appearing at the hearing constitutes a waiver of your right to offer your own testimony, or to introduce potential witnesses appearing on your behalf to examine and cross-examine witnesses, or to offer rebuttal testimony, or to set forth additional defenses to the complaint that might not be presently apparent to you." And then I signed it and sent it off, copied to Animal Control Officer, Director of Natural Resources, Town Administrator, and rest of the board. Again, I felt it was incumbent to, to warn Mr. Geagle that he would be, he would be waiving the rights to do all of those things if he, if he just stood on his correspondence. So those two things are in the file. Also in the file is the September 24, 2018, letter from this board to the Geigles that contains the various restrictions we imposed upon the dogs following the June 19, 2018 hearing on the prior allegations. We also have the Animal Control Officers' letter dated February 15, 2019, that was provided to make the complaint in the first place for the second go-around. We have the notice document that was sent out by our chairman to the Geigles dated February 20, 2019. We've got a USPS tracking for that, we've got certified return receipt requested attached to the May 29, 2018 certified mail letter to the Geigles, talking about the hearing last summer on June, well, quite the summer, June 19, 2018. And also attached to that was the, the then complaint that was made dated May 15, 2018 by the Animal Control Officer.
You have so, 32, you've got it.
Right. Yeah. And, and both, in this instance, both the complaint and the letter advising him that he would be waiving his rights were, were served in, in person. Want to make sure that they got these letters. There's a duplicate copy of the February 15, 2019 complaint. We've got here an additional narrative received from the Animal Control Officer dated June 18, 2018 relating to the incident, the prior incident. Now, let's see, we've got South Coast Hospital with something here relating to the treatment of the person who was attacked in the summer. We've got a picture of, or two pictures of injuries to that person. We've got a picture of the dogs. We've got a picture of citation that was issued for unleashed dogs. Let's see. We have some interim restrictions that were imposed by the Animal Control Officer back on May 8, 2018 upon the Geigles relating to the dogs. This was between the time that the attack occurred in the spring and our ability to hold the hearing in June. We've got something else here, it looks like some kind of a printout, and it lists, oh, these are apparently the registration dates of the dogs.
The wife's written statement.
Right, yeah, she sent something in October of this past year regarding the incident that took place on May 7. We've got a picture of Mr. Geagle with the dogs, we've got a picture of the dogs on the couch, we've got a picture of dogs with what looks like perhaps the, the Geigles' daughter and a grandchild. We've got a picture of an enclosure that was put up on the back of the house, presumably to contain the dogs, another picture of the enclosure, a third picture of the enclosure. We've got the agenda, our agenda from June 19, 2018 in here, and we also have a copy with some notations made on it of the Wareham Dangerous Dog Bylaw, so.
We take administrative notice of the file.
Selectman Tropiano's made a motion to take administrative notice of the file, can we have a second?
Second.
Not you, you're still chairman. Second by Selectman Scaziotti. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 500. So that's everything that's in the file. Now I'm gonna read the prior finding and order that we had in the previous case into the record. This is the notice of decision that was sent to the Geigles dated September 24, 2018, sent by certified mail. Dear Mr. and Mrs. Geagle, on June 19, 2018, a public hearing was held before the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass. Generalize, Chapter 140, Section 157, concerning complaints involving dogs owned or harbored by you. Sworn testimony was offered by complainants whom you had the opportunity to cross-examine. You offered sworn testimony on your own behalf. After the close of the evidentiary hearing based on the testimony heard and the exhibits presented, the board determined that your dogs are dangerous. Board voted the following motion. One, when not under the direct control of a controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building, vehicles, or secure and locked enclosure six feet in height or angled arms. Two, the dogs may only leave owner's property accompanied by a controlling person over the age of 18 and on a leash not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds used in conjunction with a muzzle. Three, microchip or tattoo identification for the dogs. Four, behavior training for the dogs from a trainer approved by the Animal Control Officer. Five, spaying or neutering of the dogs unless an owner of the dogs provide evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion the dog is unfit for alterations because of a medical condition, the owner of the dog shall cause the dogs to be altered so that the dog shall be reproductibly, says reproductively intact, I think that's, you meant to say, shall be not, not reproductively intact. Six, proof of insurance for the dogs, an amount of no less than $100,000 insuring the owner. Seven, the dog shall not be allowed to leave, to be, to be left in a secure area alone without a person over the age of 18 at the residence. And it says, "You are hereby noticed of your right to appeal the decision of the hearing authority. You have the right to file an appeal in the Wareham District Court within 10 days of receipt of this notice. Very truly yours, Alan H. Slavin, Chairman." I'd like the record to reflect that there was no appeal filed against this order that was dated September 24, 2018. At this point, I think we stuck, we need to, um, I don't know if we want to close the hearing at this point, and then do some findings?
Well, we, we have to make a determin, determination that obviously the dogs violated.
Right, and I think what I'd like to do is just ask if specific conditions were violated and get motions on each of those.
I think so, yeah.
I, I would also like to mention that when I pulled up the same day that this incident occurred, the two dogs were in the backyard in a four-foot chain link fence, they were not contained in a six-foot pen.
Hey, thank you.
Did we ever get the chips?
No.
Did we ever get the chips? What else was there? They were supposed to, training or something?
I've, I've.
Yeah, Patrick, use your mic.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I have not yet received proof of training, no sir.
So you haven't received proof of training, you didn't get the chips, and there was one other thing that they had to do.
The insurance.
The insurance, we didn't get that either.
He's not providing me with any of the conditions.
So we've gotten basically nothing from them.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, can we get a motion to, to make a finding whether the owners violated condition number one, which is when not under the direct control of a controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building, vehicles, or secure locked enclosure six feet in height or angled arms, on the date the violations, violations were released?
I move we find they violated section one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 500. Move for, request a similar motion, condition number two, the dog may only leave the owner's property accompanied by a controlling person over the age of 18 and on a leash not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds used in conjunction with a muzzle.
Move they violated section two.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 500. Number three, it doesn't instruct them to provide confirmation that they, that they obeyed this condition, so I kinda think we should skip over that one.
Okay.
The same with number four. We've heard testimony from the Animal Control Officer that she hasn't heard that they received training, but that again doesn't mean they didn't, they just might not have bought the notify, and these conditions don't require notification.
Well, we should have put that in the conditions, and we should remember that next time, yeah.
We should, going forward, we need to. Yeah, going forward, we need to. The same with the spaying and neutering, we don't know about that.
I believe both dogs were previously done, sir.
Okay. Actually, you can probably tell that by how much you're charging for the dog licenses.
Yeah, I believe it was on the state license.
I think, yeah, they were getting the discounted, not quite a whole dog rate.
They get half dog rate?
Could get more explicit.
It's not even, it's just not right. That's just not right.
Proof of insurance, once again, that, I think, proof means they were, they were supposed to provide us with that, so.
Okay, so I move they violated the proof of insurance.
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. And the final condition, dogs shall not be allowed to be left in a secure area alone without a person over the age of 18 at the residence. That doesn't really, I don't think that really applies to what happened this day.
No.
So I would skip over that one. Once again, to you, your recommendation is?
Unfortunately, taking the history of the dogs, the severity of the injury to the first victim who was a human, and now again a second injury, we can't take any chances. I'm, I'm recommending euthanasia, humane euthanasia of both dogs.
Is there anything else anybody asked of the witness? In terms of questions?
I do not.
No.
Can we close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Selectman Scaziotti?
Yes.
Selectman Bruce?
Yes.
Selectman Tropiano?
Yes, yes.
Chairman Slavin? Title bomb, yes. Okay, the hearing's closed. What are we doing? We have a motion on the Animal Control Officer's recommendation for euthanasia?
Um, I'll make a motion that we go with Cheryl's recommendation for euthanasia of both dogs.
Okay, motion, can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Bruce, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti. All, is there any discussion on this, anything to be said?
You know, I, I, this is just a terrible thing.
This is.
I, I just gotta say, I mean, this is a terrible, terrible thing.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
No.
Geez, you usually hear me pretty good. Yeah, so this is a terrible thing to have to do to a couple of animals because, in my opinion, owners can't take responsibility for their animals. Animals don't do these things without, when they're in control and when they're taken care of by their owners. And we're gonna penalize now two dogs, which is pretty sad, for owners who have really let them down. And I, I feel really bad about this, I really do. I mean, I, you know, this is, it's a little different when you sit here and you're gonna make somebody a dangerous dog than when you're gonna tell them they gotta put them to sleep. That's a whole different ballgame, and to sleep is a really bad term, 'cause basically you're gonna kill them.
Put 'em down.
And it's just a very sad thing, and I, you know, I understand, and I get your recommendation, and I can see by your face that this is a very difficult thing for you to do.
I fought for these dogs, I didn't want this to happen.
I see it, I see it in your face, I can see the tears in your eyes, because you feel so bad about this, and I, and I totally get that, and I feel bad for you as well, that you have to be put in this position because owners can't be responsible for their animals. And I just gotta say, if there's any other owners out there that are not being responsible and are listening to this, please, pay attention to your dogs, take care of them, and don't let this kind of stuff happen, because this is what happens, the dog is gonna pay the penalty, and this is just terrible.
Cheryl, we don't have a program where dogs can get adopted, put outside the area.
It's against the state law, the state statute, you cannot, yeah, you can't say that a dog is not allowed in this town and it has to be removed. Basically, you'd be passing the problem along. If he had opted to place these dogs in another home as deemed dangerous dogs prior to this incident, then he could have chosen to do that before this actually happened, but at this point, I would not recommend that, because we can't force it, we can't order it, and we can't make it a condition.
Thank you. Well, again, what Patrick said, I think all of us are the same position, it's a very difficult thing to do, but unfortunately, the dogs take the hit for the owners. I made a comment before, what I would prefer to do to the owners, but I'm not gonna say it publicly. Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo also what Selectman Tropiano said, and, you know, I think anybody who's watched this tonight has seen that we've, we've, we've done what we could to try to afford the dog owners every opportunity to come in here and speak on their dog's behalf, and I don't know that it would have made a difference, but I will say that I, I don't take any pleasure in doing this. This is not fun, I'm a dog owner, I can only imagine how I would feel, and the guilt I would feel if I were unable to control my, my dog and something were to happen that would lead to this result, so nobody takes any pleasure in doing this. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 500.
Thank you.
I'll work with you in council, I guess, to get the, the letter and the findings out.
Yep. I don't expect an appeal, most likely.
No, they were aware that this was going to happen prior to my coming, I had been very honest with them.
I think that's why they didn't show up and send a letter instead.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts, Mr. Guy, I know this was no fun for you tonight either.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The eight's on initiative reports.
Tony?
No.
Mary?
I don't have anything.
Peter?
Hmm, no.
Not yet.
Patrick?
I'm, I'm good for the hearing.
Okay, just very quickly, we'll call it a night, it's not been fun tonight, obviously.
No.
I mentioned earlier about speaking at the, up at the State House and also sending letters out in support. There're different things going on right now, I'll try and go through them as quickly as I can. We have affordable housing, a couple bills that our state senate, our state representative has put forth, not having to do with mobile homes technically as being affordable like we usually do here and gets, doesn't go anywhere. These bills have to do with the actual classification of what an affordable house is, what an affordable home is considered definition, and there's two bills that she's filed, and there's a couple other bills as well. There's also a bill that the governor filed, I believe, last Wednesday, which is a Housing Choice Initiative, and the Housing Choice Initiative also has a piece in it which changes our way we do things at town meeting. Normally, a zoning bill, if I remember right, Claire, is two-thirds majority.
Right.
And they're going to, this bill, if it passes, will take that and go toward just a simple majority. It's very difficult to get zoning changes done because of the two-thirds, and this will simplify the process of trying to basically bring forth affordable housing and different housing projects that. housing projects that normally have extreme difficulty getting anywhere. So we'll see whether this goes through or not, but this is a pretty big push. The Senate also has a couple zoning bill changes. I'm a little concerned about some of them because it takes away the rights of the local cities and towns more than they should be, so we could lose control of what comes in and doesn't come in. So those are a couple there. But there's also, on the transportation, we have a projected 2022 for the commuter rail Phase One project, which is basically New Bedford and Fall River going up into Middleborough for a new station there, which basically bypasses the Lakeville Station and makes the Middleborough Station the new centerpiece, and I'm trying to see if there's a way to get our piece, which is the old Colony Spur, included in that particular package for 2022, so we would basically come up through Borne and Wareham and meet up in Middleborough and then pick up the train there going into Boston as well. I've also got, there's been some major discussion on solid waste and recycling. We have that issue with us, with basically our system that we have another year before we have to come up with some major issues. Our cities and towns all around us with the same problems. We're looking at realistically maybe an eight-year window max before there's no place to put trash and rubbish, before all these places get closed down, and we need to come up with some ways. So the Mass. Municipal Association with the Mass. Selectmen's Association, on last Wednesday, we met and we had some major discussions with EPA Director, et cetera, on different projects and programs and how we go forward, and some other bills also. There's a bill to make miniatures, which we refer to as NIPS, as small bottles, as a bottle bill possibility, either as a ban or as a deposit. There is two or three bills right now running around all over with statewide plastic banned bags, which we kinda support. There's another piece that they're taking glass, recycling glass, and using it to repave roads, which is a pretty unique system as well. A lot of the bottling companies that take bottles back and everything because of the lack of funds, the bottles and the cans, at the state level, the money coming back, what they get for a percentage is not enough to cover their costs of actually processing stuff through, if they have to, with labor. If they could do it, you know, with no humans touching the product, they could make it work, but the way it is now, they're losing money, and we've just lost two major processes. So these are just some of the things that I'm working on, trying to get through and see if we can have something happen. We've got some windows that we maybe can actually see some results, so I'm just trying to push as hard as I can. So what I'll do is I'll make a formal request next week's meeting to go forward with this, unless someone has any objections, and we can discuss it next week.
Well, when you put them together, we'll look at them, starting from individual issues. Can I say one thing, though?
No.
I saw the governor's little thing about, about building a lot of housing.
Oh, yeah, it's a major push.
I mean, he's got a major push to build a lot of house units, okay? If those house units become 40B units, we're in a lot of trouble. Every community is gonna be in a huge amount of trouble. That's all I know. It seems to me, and that it's, it's okay to say we're gonna build a lot of house units, but how we're gonna build them is gonna make the difference as far as I'm concerned.
That's why we have to watch this building.
Exactly. So we have to be very cautious.
I'm, I'm just confused on how the 40B housing in Wareham is going to impact the crowding in Boston, because those working in Boston, their income is higher than what the Wareham 40B is. So I'm just confused how shoving 40B housing in Wareham helps Boston.
I don't think this particular housing choice bill really is for 40Bs, there might be some 40R, but I think it's basically to build, you know, basically to be able to build housing that simplifies the zoning restrictions, but not for a 40B process, not pushing that per se, because they know that 40B is an issue already for a lot of places, because they took the affordable housing out of the cities and moved it to the suburbs, which has not really worked well at all, because you're in a region as well as a local town. But I think the bill has got, this bill has like stuff over here which is good for us and stuff over here which is not good for us, that's why we need to watch and, and lobby for what's, will work for us and not work. It's not a really, it's not a 40B bill per se, because they already know 40B doesn't work. It did not generate the housing they expected and has not, and they go it wrong.
No, it's been a blight on the communities that it's been involved in because it violates all the regulations in the process. And, you know, those regulations are, towns spend a lot of times to try to shape their community based on their regulations, and then, and then they turn around and take the control away from you and build whatever they damn well please, and that's not good for any community. And I don't think there's one community in this town that's happy with it. You know, frankly, when it was 766 housing, which is what it used to be years ago, it was actually worked better than, than the 40B process ended up being, but they wanted to make an evolution, and you know, they've been talking about housing units forever. And Derek's absolutely right, building houses here doesn't help Boston. I don't know if anybody knows this, but Boston has considered continually eliminate, caused its own problems by eliminating its parking spaces as well. In case anybody hasn't read it, recently, the number one worst road in the country for traffic is the Southeast.
Southeast Expressway.
The number one worst road in the country is the Southeast Expressway.
It's worse than the 405. Who would, who would think that? Six hours to commute in LA.
Exactly. How can it be worse than that? You gotta guess, I mean, there's six lanes or eight lanes across over there and everything else, but yet we take the cake.
We travel, I travel too, so.
Yeah, every day I'm going in there lately, and it's, it's a, it's a job. It's, you know, it's a job before you get to the job.
It's approximately...
Patrick, you like to be number one around here, so.
Yes.
It's good, yeah.
It's, it, for me, when I go into Boston to do this stuff, I, I spend approximately five hours.
Yeah.
Traveling, doing nothing worthwhile.
It takes me two and a half hours in the morning, two and a half hours at night. It's a five-hour ride before I even do anything.
Yeah.
Every day.
And that's hoping there's no accident on the road.
And, and that's happened, by the way, just recently, this morning, getting onto, getting onto, onto 24, there was an accident on the ramp, so it backed all the way down 495.
So. I'll give you some more information on that next time, I'm, I'm all done.
Okay.
So basically, we have any consent agenda at all?
Yep, we do, we have one set of minutes, we're all here. And I move we approve the February 26th, 2019 regular Board of Selectmen's minutes.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0, good night Wareham.
Thank you.
See you next time.